Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the November 20th, 2018 Post Falls City Council Meeting. There she is. Shannon, please note that all council members are present, and we did start the evening with a workshop, now in regular session. Under announcements, we do have one, and that is that the city hall and city business offices will be closed Thursday, November 22nd, and Friday, November 23rd, in observance of Thanksgiving. Hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are. We are taking off under Administrative Staff Reports, Item A, Impact Fee Report for 2017.
Okay. Do you have a motion, is that the only one?
That is it.
A motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilh, Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Are there any declarations of conflict tonight? Seeing none, Shelley, please present the consent calendar.
Item A is minutes from the November 6th, 2018 City Council Meeting. Item B is payables October 30th through November 12th, 2018. Item C is granted right-of-way and easement, Bogey Drive. Item D is construction improvement agreement for Point at Post Falls, second addition, Expo Parkway, Beck Road to Woodbridge South. Item E is purchase of three police vehicles. Item F is employment contract with Robert Seal for the Community Development Director position. Item G is Pheasant's Landing Subdivision plat application. Item H is contract with Western Estates Equipment Company for four-wheel loaders with snowgates. And that is it.
Quick question on the last item. If for some reason, program we deem not to be successful, is there an out of the contract or we in for the entire lease?
There's an annual out on all of our leases.
Good, thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'd move for approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Tonight, we do have two public hearings. The first is the, and I should have mentioned, if anybody wishes to testify in the public hearing, there are forms in the back in the dais. Please fill them out, turn them into our clerk, and we'll let you speak. First item is the Worth Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Annexation. With that, I would call a public hearing. Open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of City Council. John Manley, Planning Manager here, to introduce both the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the proposed annexation for the Technology Mix zoning designation. And since most of the material is, kind of covers both, we're just going to run the public hearing once. At the end, you'd have two separate motions, one first being the Conference of Plan and Map Amendment, the second being the decision on the annexation. So, the applicant is Brad Marshall of J U B Engineers, representing Philip Worth, and the owner being Thomas Hanley. So, it's being proposed to approve additional lands, 60 acres, to be designated commercial with an annexation of Technology Mix zoning. Looking at the Future Land Use Map Request, the October 9th, it was recommended for approval at P and Z pertaining to the annexation request and the technology mixed. Similarly, in the same evening, on October 9th, it was recommended to approve that zoning designation of Technology Mixed. Project location, as you see here in the red-hatched polygon, is adjacent to this blue polygon. That blue polygon is the, a recent project that was annexed in with similarly designated commercial, and a Future Land Use Map, and designated as Technology Mixed. So the idea here is to designate this similarly and create one technology park for the entire area.
Quick question, John. So the existing, the one that we have been working on and approved, is in a urban renewal district, correct?
Correct.
Would the new property be within that district, or is it outside of that urban renewal district?
That is within the bounds of that.
It is within, okay. Excuse me, sir, we can't, if we have a question, we'll let you testify, but we can't have you comment from the.
I can clarify, the current city boundary that you see here in black, this is the current city boundary, the, and now it currently goes up this blue line that you can't see very well, around further to the south. And so the black line is the boundary outside of this blue element. It's just to the northern extent of Post Falls. So what they're proposing is west and adjacent to existing city limits. Looking at the Future Land Use Map, this hasn't been updated, but this is all red. So what they're proposing is adjacent to other red, red being the commercial designation. This land is mostly vacant. Water for this area would be provided by Ross Point Irrigation, with sewer being provided by the city of Post Falls. What you see here is an overview, these are the six zone change criteria that the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed to recommend a proposal forward to you for being Technology Mixed. One is that it needs to be consistent with the Future Land Use Map, hence the inquiry to bring this in as commercial, because commercial, the commercial designation in itself would allow for mixed-use zoning, Technology Mixed. Also, should it be consistent with goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan? I'll go over some of those in just a bit. Looking at the road classifications, traffic patterns, are they consistent with more or less Highway 41 and Prairie Avenue? So, viewed as commercial-type technology uses on arterials would be compatible. Also, commercial high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. Now, the intent is to do Technology Mixed, technology. We know that with the Technology Mix zoning, we recently recommended that up to 15% could be multifamily. So, taking into consideration that in being next to arterials would meet this, this zone change criteria for Technology Mixed. Lower-density residential is typically assigned to properties further away. This really isn't applicable at this location, because this isn't going to be a low-intense urban area down the road. This is planned to be an urban, more of an urban area, urban node. Industrial zoning is typically assigned to properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes, and may be situated away from residential zoning. So, at this location, you would have multiple routes out of Post Falls. You could take Prairie West over to 53, take Highway 41 to I-90, or go east to Hayden, or you can go north on 41 up to Rathrum and 53 and up northerly that direction. So it would have sufficient access to meet that criteria for this zone change. And here's the surrounding zoning that you see here, the red-hatched area, that's the current Technology Mixed, and then if approved, this would then follow that same hatch pattern with this being 41, that prairie. Yellow is the residential, single-family subdivisions, or plan for that. This delineates the two elements that were brought forward before. The difference here is two, as with the previous request, it was undefined, like this property currently doesn't have a designation. Yellow, it was in prior designations as residential, and it got changed to commercial. Now, not to go over extensively, because it's all one big tech mark, all the policies here on, was with Tech Park applies to this request, as it's similar activities being there. But, just briefly, to go over four, you know, the goal of the comp plan is to encourage a balance of land uses to help Post Falls remain a desirable, stable, and sustainable community. I think that's the idea of this Technology Mix Zone, is to provide some flexibility for some industrial uses, some commercial uses, maybe some open space, kind of surrounding through there, connected to trails. And so, this would need this policy point. Ordinary activities should occur within a walking distance of most residences. So going back to the zoning map, if this was a place of commerce and job creation, and looking at where people reside, and looking at the proximity to some of our trail systems, this right here is the Prairie Trail, which the intent is to connect to this Prairie Trail, to connect to this, and that would provide that opportunity for individuals residing to not only do commerce, but also commute potentially to work. Look at regulations that encourage the development of suitable-scale commercial facilities throughout the community, and that's kind of embedded in with what's permitted within that Technology Mix Zone. Commercial uses should be considered in areas indicated on the conventional Future Land Use Map as suitable for residential, commercial, or mixed use. And that's where that request for commercial and hands with the annexation kind of work hand-in-hand together. If for some reason that amendment was to be denied, then the property wouldn't be eligible for that request for Technology Mixed. This request was routed to the following list of agencies. We received neutral comments from both the Post Falls Police and Cootney County Fire, and no concerns from Cootney County. So I'd stand for any questions you have on either matter, the comp plan amendment or the annexation.
Questions to John at this point? Seeing none.
Right.
Do we wish to speak?
Yes, they do.
Good evening, Chairman, excuse me, Mayor and Council Members. Long year. Again, Brad Marshall with J U B Engineers, it's a pleasure tonight to represent Philip Worth, who's Vice President of Beyond Green Incorporated, the proponent of the Conference of Plan Amendment and Annexation. And to be clear, Beyond Green is purchasing the property from Tom Hanley, who I believe is in the audience as well, and also a co-applicant. We'd like to thank the Council for your time, staff for their help, and the Well Done Staff Report is always, always great to work with. I'm going to try and be short, I'll apologize if I'm long. We've covered a lot of this stuff throughout the year, whether or not it's the adoption of the Technology Mix Zone, the prior annexations and comp plan amendments, and the recent creation of the Urban Renewal District. With that said, I also want to give you the information you need to make a sound decision. One of the questions that did come up was, this actually is in the Urban Renewal District by a transfer of power authority from the county to the city, if you may recall that Again, the goal is to develop a mixed-use inland northwest Technology Park, which is about 345 acres now, which would include the 60-acre Conference of Plan Amendment and Annexation, inclusion of about 60 acres. We've talked a lot about the location of this property, to Prairie Avenue, to Highway 41, to the workforce in Post Falls, and North Court Lane, Hayden, and Rathrum, and its location, particularly the training facilities at K-Tech and North Idaho College, the career tech centers, and the utilities that can be extended to this site, particularly from the large Bonneville and the Vista Power Lines to the north. And that, this site can be serviced by both Avista and Cootney Electric. There's a lot of planning documents that speak to this property, as John mentioned, one of which is this prior SMART code that designated this property G2, which is, again, supports and is favorable to the comp plan and the annexation requests. This is the Highway 41 corridor plan. Again, this plan speaks to the property as well, and this, particularly 60 acres front sea extension of Cecil Road. Cecil Road is on the west side of Tolmore and will eventually extend northerly all the way to Rathrum. So, again, this property is mentioned in that plan. This hard-to-look-at map is the sewer master plan, prior sewer master plan for the city of Post Falls, and it speaks to this property and how it could only be serviced by sewer. This map is the Northeast Quadrant Sewer Study that looked at the Highway 41 corridor, all the way kind of over to Hutter Road, over to Cecil Road, and again, it provides a plan of how the Tech Park can be serviced by sewer, even the 60 acres. In layman's terms, that 60 acres would, the sewer would flow southerly to Prairie Avenue, down to Sharville Road, through Tolmore, pump up to Highway 41, then down 41, and across town at the sewage treatment plant. So my point is, the property can be serviced with utilities. Again, this property can be serviced with fiber, a very critical element of a business park. Fat Beam has a fiber line in Highway 41, and that line, most critically, will be upgraded substantially as part of the Highway 41 reconstruction. It's a critical component of a business park. We've talked a lot about population, even today's, the Mayor's State of the City address, Post Falls is going to grow tremendously, we all have mixed opinions on that, but nonetheless, people need a place to work, and that's what we want an opportunity to provide to our community. As John mentioned, we've got two requests that are in front of you tonight. One is to amend the Conference of Plan, designating the property commercial. The second is the annexation, that same 60 acres with a Technology Mixed zoning. Again, this is really an extension of the inland northwest Technology Park. To be straight and frank, we are moving forward on the Technology Park, the creation of the new zone, the comp plan amendments, annexation, this property became available, we took an option on it and included it, and it was a great purchase. We've talked a lot about that Technology Zone, and again, it's a reminder, provides for well-designed technology industrial parks that can accommodate light industrial, technology, professional, office space, together with limited commercial and residential uses to support the workshop environment. The backup is part of our Urban Renewal Plan and conceptual site plans. While the Technology Mix Zone does allow some limited residential uses, this concept plan does not have any residential uses in it. This is a business park. Our goal is to attract large technology users, somewhere like Micron Boise, which is a major industry in our state, or Intel, which is a major industry in the northwest, particularly in Portland. Again, we've got some other zones in our city, whether or not industrial zones or heavy industrial zones. Maybe those industrial zones are along the west side of the city or the east side of the city. I think we've got a heavy industrial zone right here in the middle of the city, or the prior mill site. We're not asking for an industrial zone, it's a Technology Mix Zone. Oops. And that's it, we'll back out. So I tried to be quick, John's done a really good job of covering a lot, and I also recognize that a lot of this information's in your prior packet that was provided to the council members on Friday, so, great weekend reading material. On behalf of the applicant, I respectfully request approval of the Conference of Plan Amendment and the annexation with a Technology Mix zoning, and would stand for questions.
Any questions for Brett?
Thank you so much.
Shannon, we wish to testify. Thank you. Wish to testify, neutral, Mr. Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. The reason I put on there neutral, and most of my questions have already been answered with this presentation tonight, but I was really concerned about the total acreage that this development was going to take. I support the tech project that they have going out there 100%. Anything that'll bring good-paying jobs to our community, I'm 100% behind. What the part that bothered me was the 15% clause that's put into that technology of being able to put high-density residential into it, and my math must have been off, because I believe the gentleman earlier tonight said there would be like 320-something acres total. I was trying to add up the different acreage in there, and I came up with almost 400 with this new one. And to me, it's, as I said, okay, 400 acres at 15% meant 60 acres, and what are we here tonight to approve? 60 acres. And it was just too coincidental for me. I saw a lot of nice drawings on this new tech campus and that, and they all looked real well. I didn't see a whole lot of drawings before tonight on this new 60 acres that they were asking to be part of this. I'm just, I'm just concerned of a big, ugly apartment complex being put into this 60 acres, but I believe that, from what I've heard tonight, this won't happen. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Brad, any rebuttal, or are you okay?
I'm okay.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing, thank you. Council, did this gentleman? Yeah, did you want, excuse me, sir, did you wish to testify on something tonight?
Uh, yeah.
I believe he's here for the Echo Drive vacation.
Echo Drive vacation?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be next, good, we'll make sure we get to you. Thanks, huh? So, public hearing's closed, Council, how would you like to act? Comments, input?
Makes sense.
I would move to approve the Philip Worth Comprehensive Plan, Comp Plan Amendment, File Number CPA-0003-2018.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next public hearing tonight is the Echo Drive Vacation, and I will open that public hearing. John, I'm going to stop you one sec. Shannon, do you have any forms to testify on this one?
Yes, I have those.
Okay, good, appreciate it.
Yes, so the Echo Drive Vacation Request, F A C A-003-2018, applicant is Tate Engineering, Ernest Warner, for the owner of Four Con LLC. The requested action is to review and approve the requested vacation for a portion of Echo Drive, as detailed here in Exhibit S1 in the red-hatched area. You can see with staff comments that it was viewed as, as part of the Transportation Master Plan. It was not planned to, for this to extend further west, and it lies at the, more of the dead end of this, and so, inherently speaking, staff didn't see any issues with the request. This is the exhibit, more of the legalese of the vacation area. How it works is, you vacate it, half goes to the north and half goes to the south, of which is the same owner, so. These are the agencies that were routed. We've received comments from Cootney County Fire and Post Falls Police, all being neutral. So I'd stand for any questions you might have with it.
Questions to John on this one? Is the applicant here wishing to speak, or?
Um, let me see.
Where's this at?
One sec, we'll get you, you'll be next up here.
See, I don't see the applicant here, so.
Okay, I wouldn't think so. So, now we do have someone wishing to testify, so one sec.
Are you Charles? Yes.
Charles, please come forward and give your name for the record, please.
My name's Charles Shade. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Charles.
As you probably know, I have no idea what I'm doing, so please bear with me. I hope you're all Republicans. This thing on Echo Drive, from what I can gather, that's Echo Drive between Corbin and McGuire, is that right?
It's what you see here in the red hatch.
Yeah, I can see this, and it doesn't tell me anything.
This is the legal area that's being.
Yeah, what's the streets?
It's Hudlow Drive and Echo Drive, the intersection, so just west of there, the west, 260 feet approximately, the fairly furthest west of that right-of-way.
Of what?
Echo Drive, so.
There is no other street, that's what he's asking, I think, John.
There's only one Echo Drive.
Yeah.
And it comes, goes from, from McGuire, past Corbin, for about two, three blocks past Corbin. All right? From Corbin on is not part of Post Falls. So it has to be the area between Corbin and McGuire, is that right?
No. No, no. Pleasant view right there. So it's this portion that's with?
I can see that portion, I don't see the roads.
Well, Pleasant views, if you look, Pleasant views out on the left side of that screen.
Show him where McGuire is, John.
Rob, do you want to come up?
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah, right in here.
Members of the Council, just for clarification, the piece of Echo Drive that is being vacated is in an area where there is currently a mini-storage located at. This is a section of Echo Drive which exists as public rights of way, but there is no road there. So when the, when the miniStorage was built, they did not build over the section which was reserved for public roadway.
Here, could you show me where McGuire Street is?
So McGuire is going to be off of this screen, another half a mile to the east. The edge of the screen.
Huckleberry.
Is Huckleberry Road right here. Corbin is going to be just a little bit further to the east of there, so this is Huckleberry Road, this is the.
All right, that puts it, it's not a mobile home park. Everybody owns their own property.
Everyone owns their own property, that's correct.
Yes.
So this is Boulder Court right here.
Okay, now that puts it, and that is part of Post Falls?
Yes, the mobile home park, not the mobile home, the miniStorage is within the city of Post Falls.
Okay, I know where that miniStorage is.
And the only piece they are vacating is the 200 feet which is within that miniStorage facility.
What are you going to do with that property, once you vacate it?
It would vacate back to the adjoining property owner to the north and to the south. It would no longer be publicly owned.
So there's no road there now? It's in the property of the miniStorage.
I want to, I want to thank you. See, the reason I was so concerned is, the city, for one reason or another, put a sewer system in, okay? And I drive on Seltice, and every time I drive by that, I can smell it, and it smells terrible.
Yes, the mobile home park, not the mobile home, the mini storage is within the city of Post Falls.
Okay, I know where that mini storage is.
And the only piece they are vacating is the 200 feet, which is within that mini storage facility.
What are you going to do with that property once you vacate it?
It would vacate back to the adjoining property owner to the north and to the south. It would no longer be publicly owned.
So there's no road there now? It's in the property of the mini.
I want to, I want to thank you. See, the reason I was so concerned is the city, for one reason or another, put a sewer system in, okay? And I drive on Salties, and every time I drive by that, I can smell it, and it smells terrible. And there's a, there is a mobile home park right next to it. Did anybody tell them people what was going on? Give them a chance to buy out?
The Mobile Home Park was built after the sewer plant.
Really?
Yes.
I didn't smell that until last year.
Yeah, it was. So, but we answer your question.
Anyway, you can see why I was, I was concerned.
Well, thank you for your time.
I'm going to thank you.
Appreciate it.
You have a good night.
Thank you, sir. And with that, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
I'd move to approve the Echo Drive Right Away Vacation, file number VACA-0003-2018.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Tonight we have none, followed by citizens issue. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to testify or address the council on a non-agenda item. Seen nobody jumping at the chance. New business, tonight we have none. We do have one ordinance, and that is the Quarry Drive Vacation.
Move to place the ordinance Quarry Drive Vacation on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Shannon, would you read it, please?
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls and municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the vacation of rights of way situated in the southwest one-fourth corner of the, let me start over, situated in the southwest, one-fourth of the southwest, one-fourth of Section 32, Township 51, North Range 5 West Boise Meridian, as described herein, providing for disposition of the vacated right of way, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing an effective date, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to approve the ordinance Quarry Drive Vacation to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Shannon, just be happy that it was by its first and only reading. Next item up is administrative staff reports, and item A has been removed from the agenda, so it would be item B, follow-up on the 12th Street, speed concern. Mr. Paulus?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, back at your second meeting in October, there was a concern brought to your attention on 12th Avenue between Chase Road and Spokane Street regarding speed concerns, and in particular, the safety of the children walking to and from the elementary schools in that area. After that meeting, both the engineering department and the police department discussed real quickly how we were going to organize our resources to take a look at that concern and bring information back to you. Between the two departments, the police department has a jammer unit which mounts on a pole, collects speed and volume datas which can be utilized, and this engineering department generally borrows the police department's, one of their radar guns to do speed studies, and then the engineering department has tubes which can keep track of speed as well as the number and volume of traffic. At the time of last month's meeting, the jammer unit was currently out of commission and was being repaired, so engineering borrowed a radar gun. We did speed studies on both Chase and 12th Avenue. We did a analysis in the morning during the school zone hours, and we did an analysis in the afternoon prior to the school zone hours being in place. We also placed traffic tubes out there to check our data against the radar gun and also to count the volume of traffic. What we found was comparing to 2015, when we had last been out there, traffic volumes along 12th Avenue have increased slightly back in 2015. Our numbers were showing at about 1,200 vehicles per day on 12th Avenue. Now vehicle volumes are up about 1,400 vehicles per day. That's based upon a three-day average in the middle of October to, for both of those timeframes. We got lucky that way. 12th Avenue is listed as a collector roadway. It's anticipated to have traffic volumes between 2,000 to 7,000 vehicles per day. We would say that the number of people driving on that road right now are well within the limits of what a collector roadway is at. There was some concern about maybe some people were trying to bypass and to get to Spokane Street and possibly get around some of the construction that had been going on over the course of the summer in, along the Salties area. That construction has, for the most part, cleared up, and maybe some of that traffic has gone back to its previous normal operating conditions, and so we didn't see a high volume of traffic. The speeds we saw were in the realm of about 28 miles per hour as the 85th percentile speed. Almost 95% of the speeds we saw with the radar gun were at or below 30 miles per hour. Historically, there had been some indication that there may have been an individual or a couple of individuals speeding through at some odd times of the day. The police department has gone back out and they've placed their jammer unit to try to identify if there is specific individuals coming through at a specific time of day to do increased enforcement on that. The police department has also gone out within the last few days and done increased enforcement during the school zone hours. One of the things we saw in our traffic tube data was that during the school zone hours, about 50% of the people were actually violating the 20 mile per hour speed limit. They were, the 85th percentile speeds were about 25 miles per hour or less. In the most recent enforcement, the police department has pulled over three individuals in their enforcement, which in their opinion was a fairly slow take and is not indicative of a high-speed problem. We think it is good to continue monitoring in this area. We do have a lot of kids in that area going to and from school, and right now, there aren't pedestrian facilities out there for the children, and there aren't bicycle facilities either. So it's an area to keep abreast of and continue to monitor, but it is not a high-safety concern at this time from the data we see. And the police department is here to answer any specific law enforcement questions as well.
Have we reached out to the gentleman who raises a concern?
We have not got a hold of him yet, and I can do that.
We will. Okay. I think it'd be good to reach out and let him know.
Yeah.
Please thank him for continuing to keep it forefront in our mind.
We will do that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any comments on that?
Captain, we have data back from the police equipment.
Mayor, Council, Lieutenant Brantl, I'm Patrol Lieutenant. So jammer is back now, and will be placed out there come Saturday. And so we'll have data starting from Saturday through the school being back in session next week, and get that data during school time hours as well.
So a week or two, you'll have the data?
Yeah, another week, we'll have a fresh set of data on it, and we'll have some enforcement times to put out there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Rob. Appreciate your follow-up on that. Mayor comments? I'd just like to say that today had the opportunity to deliver the State of the City at Post Falls Chambers Luncheon. Always appreciate the opportunity that the chamber gives us to give an update on what's going on in the city of Post Falls. I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and please travel safe wherever your travels may take you. And I'd make a comment about the Dallas Cowboy, but I won't. That. Counsel comments?
I just have one, and that's just to thank the staff. We've had citizen concerns come forward. Rob, great presentation tonight, and I know Mark and Chief Knight were involved with that too, but I think it's important that when our citizens come forward and bring an issue to us, that we respond quickly to that. And boy, you guys are just like Johnny on the spot. We had the parking issue by the brewery, and you guys were right on top of it. So, you know, it makes our job, we say this all the time, it makes our job a lot easier, but you guys really make our job a lot easier. So thank you to all of the staff who react so quickly to the citizen comments that come forward.
Any other comments?
Go Cougs.
And we do not need an executive session tonight.
We do not.
So the next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We need to adjourn.